Starting now. Welcome to the New York City Housing Authority's Public Hearing on the Draft Fiscal Year 2022 Annual Plan and the Draft Significant Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2021 Annual Plan. I'm Janelle Hudson, Director of NYCHA's Resident Engagement Department, and I will be your moderator this evening. Thank you for joining us for this virtual public hearing. In a moment, I will introduce the interpretation services we have available this evening. Then there will be a brief overview of public hearing process and the annual plan and significant amendments. Introductions from NYCHA's board members and a presentation from NYCHA's Chair and CEO Gregory Russ, followed by comments from those of you who are joining in tonight. We have a sign language interpreter for the hearing impaired who will be visible on video for the duration of this meeting. We also have Spanish, Russian, and Chinese interpreters available by both Zoom and by phone. Interpreters, would you please introduce yourselves, starting with Spanish? May we have the Spanish interpreter, please introduce yourself? Okay, let's have Russian interpretation, please introduce yourself. On the English channel, please. Chinese interpretation, please introduce yourself. Spanish interpretation. Russian interpretation, please introduce yourself. Thank you all for taking the time to attend our second virtual public hearing. We appreciate that you have made this a priority and are here this evening. In accordance with Section 5A of the United States Housing Act of 1937 as amended, housing authorities are required to develop with review and input from residents and the general public annual plans for the coming year and then gather input on the plans from residents and the general public. Federal law allows a public housing authority to modify or amend its annual plan. Significant amendments to the plan must also be brought to a public forum to provide residents and the general public the opportunity to comment. On June 11th, 2021, NYCHA released the Draft Fiscal Year 2022 Annual Plan and the Draft Significant Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2021 Annual PHA Plan for Public Review. This amendment is for the Fiscal Year 2021 Capital Plan and Five-Year Action Plan and several real estate development activities. The draft plan and the draft significant amendment are available for public review on NYCHA's website. The executive summaries for the draft annual plan and the draft significant amendment are available in English, Spanish, Chinese, and Russian on NYCHA's website. This public hearing is also currently being livestreamed on YouTube, and the recording of this hearing will be available on NYCHA's website after the hearing has concluded. As part of the annual plan and significant amendment process, NYCHA met with members of the Resident Advisory Board, RAB, and Citywide Council of Presidents at five meetings between March and May this year. The draft fiscal year 2022 annual plan and the draft amendment were also sent to all Resident Advisory Board delegates and to each Resident Association president. I would like to thank the eight members of the Citywide Council of Presidents, Daniel Barber, Lilly Marshall, Ethel Velez, Reginald Bowman, Ann Cotton Morris, Dr. Brenda Harris, Bernona Bratton, and Lilly Lozano, and their 37 RAB delegates representing each of the C-COP's nine districts and including one Section 8 resident. We encourage residents and the public to provide written comments on the Draft Fiscal Year 2022 Annual Plan and the Draft Fiscal Year 2021 Significant Amendment. You can provide comments via email, fax, through the regular mail, or this evening at the public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to obtain the views, comments, and recommendations of the public on the Draft Fiscal Year 2022 Annual Plan and the Draft Significant Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2021 Annual Plan. The draft plans and draft amendment are not final and will be modified before they are submitted to HUD. Please understand, however, that this evening is not intended as a forum for verbal exchange. NYCHA representatives will not engage in discussions with the speakers, nor will they respond to questions. They are present to hear what you have to say about the draft plan and the significant amendment. Joining us tonight, we have NYCHA board members. Greg Russ, Chair and CEO. Joseph Adams, Member. Magaly Austin, Member. Paula Gavin, Member. Pat Giewal, Member. Jacqueline Young, Member. We also have Captain Christopher G. M. Bron from the NYPD's Housing Bureau here this evening. We will now hear from our Chair and CEO Gregory Russ.
Janelle, thank you, and thanks for the opportunity to talk through a number of things that will impact NYCHA over the next few years. The annual plan process that we're going to go through this evening is also for a chance for us to discuss NYCHA's continuing efforts to install institutional reforms under the agreement that we signed with HUD, the Southern District, and the city back in January of 2019. In addition, we still face tremendous capital needs, and we're going to talk about those in a minute. But I want to preface my remarks by saying we have the opportunity through a variety of sources. Potentially, there will be some funding from Washington for capital. We don't know how much, we don't know when we'll receive it, and we don't know the timing on that. We also have put forth this year, in terms of raising capital, the idea that we establish another public entity, a sister agency, the Preservation Trust. So we'll talk about that a little bit. Both of these things are not contradictory. We don't know what the feds are going to do. When we rolled out the trust model earlier this year, many folks said, hey, wait a minute, we're going to get money from Washington, why do we need to do this other thing? And that's not, that is a legitimate question. And we think, since we're still up in the air with what money might come to NYCHA Capital, we also want to continue to think about the trust and what it could mean. But let's put it in the context, because this annual plan is about next year. It's about understanding how we're going to attack some of the issues we have. And some of those issues are layered on because we also have the agreement that we signed with HUD. So let's go to the next slide. Many of you have seen this slide before. It's how we have kind of characterized what it is when we say blueprint for change. This blueprint document includes 40 billion in capital needs to invest in all the buildings that NYCHA currently has that are not going, including the ones that are going Rad and PACT. We also must reorganize to address the concerns raised by the compliance issues in the HUD agreement. And the HUD agreement actually compels us to reorganize. We are, we had in March a reorganization framework document that was concurred in by the Southern District and HUD. We're currently in the process of setting up the working groups to take on various problems. There's going to be an implementation plan, and we have already started to implement some of the changes there. And the third area that we usually talk about when we think of these other two is the potential for a jobs and recovery strategy. Whatever the source of the capital, whether it's money we raise on our own using the Preservation Trust, or whether it's money we receive from the federal or city or state governments, or a combination of the two, we must be mindful that we need a jobs and recovery strategy. We need to expand and deepen the economic opportunities that are made available for Section 3, MBE and WBE. NYCHA is already, in the past five years, entered into contracts with MBE/WBE firms totaling over $2.8 billion. A significant achievement. We have significant achievements also in the area of Section 3. And if we're going to make this recovery strategy work, we have to understand it's going to be at a scale never attempted before. And I'll explain more about that in a few minutes. So what about the reorganizational changes? A lot of residents, when we speak with them, when we spoke to them this past year, talked about, well, things have to change at the property level, and we agree. So let's go to the next slide. I mentioned the HUD agreement requires us to work with the federal monitor. We also have weekly briefings with HUD and the Southern District. It requires us to do the organizational plan. And NYCHA conducted a planning process to engage residents, employees, and other stakeholders in designing this new operating model for a long-term vision for the authority. So where are we in the process, if we can go to the next slide? The organizational plan, the organizational structures we proposed have been concurred in by the Southern District at HUD, and we're now in the process of going through the changes that we have to make to reform and restructure the housing authority. And these changes are two kinds. There are structural changes, that is, who reports to whom, how we divide up the properties in the field and the boroughs. There is a revamped organizational chart, and we're beginning to fill that in. So there's been a lot of changes since the concurrence back in March. We've completely reorganized the borough structures, creating neighborhood alignments, and filled those positions for the neighborhood administrators. And we're working to come up with business process changes. This is a fancy way of saying, what are the steps that you go through related to the work orders? What are the steps that you would go through if we want to make sure a building is cleaner? So these are all things that we're working on now and looking towards a draft of an implementation plan to HUD and the Southern District later this year. We've set up a number of working groups, if we could go to the next slide. And these working groups reflect areas that residents have called out as problems, difficulties, issues. Why can't this be easier? Why does NYCHA make this so hard? And these are legitimate gripes, and that's, in effect, what these working groups are going to tackle. We're going to have working groups for work order reform. We're going to reform the alternative work schedule. Uniformly, we heard that the residents did not think this was working. We have rolled out the neighborhood model, as I mentioned, and we're in the process of putting administrative teams at the borough level, meaning that the support staff, those folks who support the property managers, the neighborhood administrators and the borough staff, those folks will also be closer and out in the field. We've also redesigned the annual recertification process, that rollout has already started. Property-based budgeting. This is a, this sounds like a real dry topic, and in some ways it is, but in other ways, it's very exciting. This means that the property managers will have a property-based budget, and that staff, residents, and other stakeholders will know what the resources are for each property. Each year, we have been evolving towards making this easier to do. We're going to continue to do that, but it gives the property managers more control, and that means there's more control about the budget closer to where the work has to happen. So property-based budgeting is also an information tool because we're going to require that this budget be shared with the tenant association and residents at the properties. We're also working on lease enforcement issues and asset management strategy, which is what are, what is the way that NYCHA is going to look at its asset over the long terms. In addition to these working groups, which are specifically targeted to these business processes and to the day-to-day interactions that residents have with our staff and the institution, we are, we are also working with the Resident Roundtable, if we could go to the next slide. This is a more formal process to engage residents in the transformation plan. And residents who are recruited, we have 32 residents, one from each neighborhood, and we have two from Section 8. And they're going to take on lease enforcement and compliance, quality of life and stewardship, safety and security, and feedback channels and quality assurance. And feedback literally being, how are we going to talk to each other? So beginning in June of 2021, the residents will serve on the roundtable for two years. And this is a process that'll be managed by our Resident Engagement Department with the support of strategy and innovation and support from this office. So this is exciting, as these residents are going to be working with staff on taking on common problems. So the slides I've just given you is a flavor for the reorganization process. And while it's not a direct part of the annual plan, we thought this was an important time to describe it, and because there's going to be more changes, more alignments, and more efforts to make sure that we have the structure and steps in place to deliver better service over time at the property level. Now, one of the keys to delivering that better service is whether we can invest in our properties in a significant way. We have to raise, whatever the source, sufficient capital to invest in every single unit that NYCHA currently owns. No unit is going to be left go, and no family is going to be left behind in the models that we're proposing. So let's talk about some of the ideas we have shared on how to raise this money, we can go to the next slide. First, let's think about our need. $40 billion across the entire portfolio. This is a significant amount of money. In fact, it's more than many of the state budgets of the states in the United States. And it's extraordinarily high, it's the most need of any housing authority in the country. And when we started to look at this, we wanted to make sure that we could raise enough money across a variety of sources, including PACT and RAD, to fulfill the demand that the plant, the physical plant is making on us. What are the kinds of things we're going to spend the money on? Frankly, we're spending it on basics, but these basics are some of the same reasons we're in the monitor agreement. Let's look at, one of the biggest items on the screen is mold. Mold, we estimate, would take $15.2 billion. And what does that mean? If someone comes to you and says, well, they're just painting the walls or putting bleach in, that's only a tiny piece, that's a repair response to the mold issue. We have to get behind the walls and replace all the pipes, whether you're in a three-story building, a five-story building, a 20-story building, it doesn't matter. All those what they call risers have to be replaced with new piping. Only if we replace that piping over time will we begin to change what's happening in the unit. Right now, when we just do work in one unit, we may cause a leak above or below in another unit. Those pipes are so old that they're very brittle. They're often damp because they do, they leak at the seams. Remember, a lot of our piping is as old as the building itself. So the mold number is high because it involves all the labor necessary to replace all that internal, the bones of the building. In addition, this also includes full kitchen and bath upgrades. That means new kitchen cabinets, countertops, sinks, flooring. And the same is true in the bathroom. Both of those rooms would receive a total makeover with modern fixtures and appliances and upgrades across the board. That's why the mold number is so big and the biggest item on the list. But this list also includes all the other elements that we have to tackle in the HUD agreement. The HUD agreement requires us to meet certain repair standards, meet certain compliance requirements, that is true. But if you look at the whole agreement, it quickly, quickly moves from repair to you have to replace X number of elevators by a certain date. You have to have an X number of boilers replaced by a certain date, that's capital. So on the list is heat at 6.6 billion, elevators at 2.2. In addition, we have work, a lot of work to do with how we handle trash, and that trash handling leads to issues with pests and waste, that's also in here. And lead abatement and a set of other things from security and gas risers and so forth round out this $40 billion number. Even when NYCHA has full funding under the capital fund, we can't get close to this number. The other thing that we're looking to do as part of our ideas is the current procurement structure that NYCHA works with doesn't work for us very well in many areas. We are in the process of reforming that, but we're proposing also for some procurement relief so that NYCHA and potentially Preservation Trust could make large contracts. I mean, these would be extremely large. We'd be trying to rehabilitate, say, 12,000 or 13,000 units at a time, and that contract alone would be a billion or more dollars. The other thing we want to say is that we are aware of all the discussions going on in Washington. If we get full or partial capital from the American Jobs Plan or the Green New Deal, we believe that the trust model that we propose can more effectively spend this funding, and it'll access additional federal subsidy as necessary to fully retrofit every property. What the 40 billion is, what it includes, is how are we going to tackle these old systems and these old issues to achieve compliance? If there's other things to be done in the building, for example, if we want to meet some Green New Deal standard, like electrification or solar, that's going to be in addition. So if we want to do energy, we may have to raise additional money anyway. It is true, for boilers and elevators, we can make progress there. But if we want to move into the era of green, we're also going to have to raise some additional money there. So the trust, as I'm going to discuss it, is another public agency designed to work to achieve the goals we have described on this page, help raise that $40 billion. Do it with a reasonable but expedited procurement process and spend money however we receive it, whether it's financed or comes as a grant or comes as part of some application we make for energy improvements in the future. Now let's go to the next slide and talk a little bit about what the trust is and is not. This is another public agency that would be created under state law. And by saying that, I want to contradict in a very direct way a lot of the misinformation I have seen over the past year and a half. The trust is public. There's no private entity lurking in the shadows. There's no private company, there's no private investor waiting to pounce and take our buildings. Those rumors are untrue, they're false, and I've seen it so many times. The trust is a smokescreen for private developers, not true. The development would take place through contracts that the trust would let in cooperation and collaboration with NYCHA. There's no private developer in the same way that folks use that word, ready to take our sites. But what is this trust? How would it work? Under the trust, NYCHA remains the permanent owner of the land and buildings. We enter into a long-term ground lease in order to access what's called a tenant protection voucher from HUD. This is a project-based subsidy, a Section 8 subsidy worth double what we get now. The trust would oversee comprehensive capital retrofits, and the trust would contract back with NYCHA. So NYCHA's public workforce continues to manage and maintain the property. The trust can also use this procurement model that we're proposing to spend money from Washington or the state more quickly and more efficiently. What are the benefits? This model retains 100% public control. NYCHA owns, controls, and manages the property. There's no private manager, no sale of the land or the buildings. Residents keep all their public housing rights. Rents are the same. Succession rights are retained. All the 964 rights, which create the C-COP, your tenant councils, your voting, all those requirements are carried over. And there's more as well. Plus, we can use a best value method of procurement to select vendors, not just the low bid, and we can manage those renovations regardless of the funding source. So this is not a privatization scheme. It's absolutely not. And for those of you who are listening in this evening, if you've run into a neighbor, you hear someone else, and someone says, well, that blueprint is a plan to privatize NYCHA, and eventually they're going to come for our apartments and throw us out in the street. And that is not true. Not one bit of it is true. We don't want to lose any families here, that's not our job, that's not our mission. And we don't want to lose any units, they're too precious because of the income groups we serve. And one example of how this is going to work, I think is compelling, and I'm going to share it for a minute. When we institute the ground lease, the ground lease is actually recorded against the land and the buildings. So NYCHA is not losing control so much as creating the trust as our public partner to help us do this work. And between the trust and NYCHA, the buildings are safely under public control. But that ground lease has some other things it does. It acts as a deed restriction. And that means that the property can never be sold out from underneath us, can never be made into a hotel or high-end condo. It has to be a property for low, very low, and extremely low-income families and has to serve them. That's the point. The point is to protect that, and that's what this program does. And when you hear those rumors out there, don't believe them. We can provide literature, we can give examples. This is a public model doing a public mission. How would we get the money if we had to? How would the trust raise money to put into our properties? Let's go to the next slide. I mentioned these tenant protection vouchers. I know this is another area that families are concerned about. They say, well, I knew someone that had Section 8, and they lost their building or something else happened. This is not that kind of Section 8, it's not tenant-based. Now explain how it works using this chart. First, let's talk about the money. The first thing to notice is right now, under NYCHA's existing funding formulas, including the rent that any of you who are residents pay, we bring in about $1,250 per unit per month. That's the tenant rent, that's that unit's share of the capital we get every year and the operating subsidy. If we transfer that unit from a public housing into a Section 8 tenant protection voucher, and then the voucher is attached to the apartment, it's not a tenant-based voucher, it's called a project-based voucher. It becomes connected to the apartment in perpetuity. The first thing that happens is the money changes dramatically. That voucher brings in an extra $650 a month for every apartment that is so transferred. If we had 25,000 tenant protection vouchers, NYCHA could raise 3.4 billion. NICA could raise three point four billion in investment. That's a big bite out of that forty billion dollars. Now, why would we consider this method? There are a couple of reasons that are important. First, it relies on existing federal appropriations. When we designed this, we were in a different administration. The Biden administration is much more friendly to our public housing issues. It's great, actually. But we designed this model to work inside the existing federal appropriation structure. Tenant protection vouchers are provided by Congress every year for a variety of purposes, including the ones I'm describing tonight. It didn't rely on additional appropriations. And we're still not sure what is going to happen with those dollars from Washington. So the trust was designed to raise all the money to make the repairs using that additional six hundred and fifty dollars a month. Now, a lot of folks have said, well, what's the mechanism? Likely it would be a bond issue or some kind of variation on that. And a lot of folks have said, well, what if the bond issue defaults? Well, we structured this deal to be reasonable. And frankly, the way we structured this deal, default of any kind is extremely remote, if not impossible in a way. We also have provisions in the legislation that sets up the trust for the opportunity for the state or city to intervene. And frankly, if there was a concern, the investors don't want to take over property. They're not here to own something. In fact, they can't own it the way you would think an investor might want to. They can't come in and say, oh, here's a public housing property, let's convert it to a hotel and make some money. Can't be done. Remember the ground lease tied into that property. So the, the six hundred and fifty dollars was used to size the debt. We think we can take on a reasonable amount of debt and pay it off. Plus, once we pay off the debt, the extra money that you see on this screen is with that property forever. It's much more valuable than the operating subsidy we get through the public housing program, even when we combine it with a particular unit share of the capital fund. So this is an extremely efficient way to raise money using the vouchers. But what if we get money from Washington? Well, we can adjust the number of vouchers. We can think about properties where it have extraordinary needs. Maybe there's a site that wants to do some kind of significant energy renovations, whatever that may be. We can think about re-cladding the buildings as part of or on top of whatever we get from Washington. So the trust is really quite flexible. Next slide, please. I mentioned that the trust has to be created by state law. We first introduced this bill up in Albany in December of of the prior year, and this year we introduced it in the spring. We had the bill introduced in the Assembly and the Senate, but we did not get it to a vote. But that bill was very different than the one we introduced the fall before. That's because we engaged with residents. And this is another myth that is circulating, that we have not had time with residents. We know it was COVID and we know that those kinds of meetings were hard. But we did it anyway. And we're prepared to continue to do it all the rest of this year, as you'll see in a moment. We made over twenty-five different changes to the bill. We made sure that the mold requirements apply to the trust. We made sure that residents will pay a larger role in selection of trust board members. Trust would have a nine-person board, including four resident members. We heard that the trust idea should be piloted, so we capped the number of units at twenty-five thousand as a first tranche. We heard that NICA must clearly say in any legislature that, that we're paying moving costs, and we did. We also said no over-income families would be displaced, these are families with flat rents. And typically, they're multiple wage earners, three or four people working jobs. And that's one of the reasons that their incomes go up, they did the right thing. We also heard that all the rights that residents have must be captured in writing between the residents and the trust. And we're going to create some kind of family protection contract that will do just that for anyone who goes through this method, if we're able to use it. We heard that all of Part Nine Sixty-four, that's the resident councils and the elections, and it includes resident management companies, which all that we kept in the bill and we would require the trust once the rehab is underway to negotiate with any residents that want to take on what's called an RMC, a resident management company. We also included that there'd be deep, what they call decarbonized, that is green and electrification renovations. And finally, residents and buildings must be protected if there are any issues paying back the bonds. And all the rights and restrictions that I'm talking about remain under all circumstances. The building can never go to market rate. Plus, we have included the option for the state or city governments to intervene to correct any problem with the bond or debt. So this is a bill that was informed by public discussion, by, pardon me, discussion with the C-COP. The C-COP has not endorsed this, I want to be very clear, but they did give us comments on the bill. And also with residents at the site level, in the districts, and all across the city. And we made those changes because we think it makes our bill stronger and fits into our mission. There's going to be continued resident engagement. NICA plans to reintroduce the bill, we hope, next January. By that time, we hope that how this thing looks and how it will shake out will be informed by information from Washington as to what kind of money we might expect from that area. So we're going to continue to host citywide and development-specific town halls. And I'm hoping we can do some of those in person as we emerge from COVID. We're going to engage citywide and development-specific resident leadership. As I mentioned, we're going to restart the in-person engagement. And we want to continue to work with folks to show how we can raise this money. This is not an idea who is incompatible with receiving federal funds. It's an idea that complements it. This is not an idea that's designed to privatize any NICA building. That is simply false. It's not designed to take away resident rights, it keeps them. It's designed to make Section Eight with respect to rights and resident protections work the same way that public housing works. It's a hybrid model that can do that. It's been done in other areas of the country using different models. But that Section Eight isn't the only protection residents will have. They'll have full protections as provided by the legislation and is provided in the ground lease and other documents. So I wanted to take this time in front of this meeting because we will be talking about capital, we will be talking about resident engagement. And if the trust comes to pass next year, we would be coming back and doing probably a significant amendment to our plan next year, if there's any chance to get properties queued up. So this is an informational session about our major plans on reorganization and capital for the coming year. And they will continue even as we work through the issues in the annual plan process. So that concludes my presentation and we can go on to the next section of the hearing tonight.
Okay, thank you Chair. So I just want to point out to everyone that we do have language interpretation. You can click the globe that is, that should be on your screen and select the language of your choice. So we hope that everyone who has a comment about the draft fiscal year twenty twenty-two annual plan and the draft significant amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty-one annual plan will be able to express it this evening. Let's go over the following ground rules to make this event run smoothly. Attendees who submitted a request to speak via email will be called on to speak in order of submission. When called on to speak, please ensure your microphone is not muted. If you are dialing in by phone, you will need to press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. And you will see a countdown clock on the screen, please keep an eye on that clock so that you'll know when your time limit is approaching and you'll also hear a signal at the end of the three minutes. If you have additional comments or you have an issue that concerns only you or your apartment, you can submit written comments via email to annualplancomments@nica.nyc.gov or by typing your name, development, address, apartment number, contact information, and issue in the Zoom Q and A box. Staff from our operations and customer operations departments are joining us this evening and will be reviewing comments as well. If you did not submit a request to speak in advance of this hearing and you wish to speak, you may use the raise hand function in Zoom or by pressing star nine on your phone to request to speak. So the order of speakers will be first individuals who signed up in advance of the start of this hearing. And second, if time permits, we'll go to the raised hands. And if I get to call on a raised hand and you're raising your hand over the phone, I will call out the last four digits of your phone number to alert you to speak at that time. You will be able to press star six to unmute yourself. If you are not responsive or no longer wish to speak when your name or phone number is called, I will need to move on to the next speaker. The hearing is being recorded and transcribed by a stenographer. Please begin by identifying yourself and your development or affiliation. Please remember that we are here to comment on the draft plan and draft significant amendments. Demeaning, vulgar, or discriminatory language, as well as personal comments or attacks on resident representatives, public attendees, or NICA staff will not be tolerated. As moderator, I reserve the right to immediately move on to the next speaker in line if I deem comments as inappropriate. Please be considerate of your neighbors and follow these instructions. We are here to consider issues that are of concern to everyone, not issues that concern only a single resident or individual. Let us begin with comments from attendees who submitted a request to speak. When I call your name, please unmute yourself and begin speaking. When you are finished speaking and your time is up, please mute yourself so that other speakers can be heard. Our first speaker this evening is Terry McCoy.
Okay, hi. So I reviewed the reporting materials that were sent to me, the notes from the, well, the tenant, was it the Resident Association members that met in June? And a couple of things were of concern, which is that, well, one, I totally agree that residents have got to be more involved in, in making these decisions about capital assessment needs. I know no one has been reaching out to our building. And from what, and on top of it, our building was actually moved from Wise Towers to De Hostis, and I only found that out because Chair Russ told that to me in a conversation and apparently it was, the, the reason was some sort of consolidation. I really don't even understand what that means, but it was never something that we were informed about or, or told about. It just happened and, and there are a lot of people in this building that don't even know about that. But in any case, when I looked on the five, five-year capital plan, we don't seem to be listed, our building, W-S-R-B, which I guess is now De Hostis, we don't seem to be listed under anything, and I'm specifically concerned about elevator and pest and waste management, and I'm just going to get to the heart of it. We have a terrible elevator situation, our elevators go out daily. On my floor alone, we have five different apartments where there are disabled people, myself included. Are just last week or two weeks ago, we, the police, the fire department were here three times in one week to pry open the elevator to get people out. And that's just like a regular thing. We're not on the list for elevator upgrade, repair, or a new elevator, and that concerns me. Second, we have a terrible rat infestation problem, which has been made worse by the fact that we have contractors who have fenced off our, the area where we would normally put recyclables and garbage. And as a result of that, you know, people are just throwing the trash off to the side of the lobby, the front door. You know, we've got rats running back and forth in front of the front door. You know, that's an untenable situation and yet we're not on the list for any of that. So I'm wondering how are these building development sites chosen? And why, why are we not on there? And how, how can we get some sort of consideration or have somebody sort of, you know, look again at us? I've articulated these concerns to the monitor as well, just letting you know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy. Our next speaker is Louis Iguata, followed by Brenda Temple. It's Louis. Okay, let's go to Brenda Temple. Lorraine Brown.
Thank you, I'm unmuted. Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to say I might be a few seconds over. As a person with a disability, I hope you will respect that and give me the opportunity to speak. I'm not going to speak much beyond the three minutes. And I speaking to you as, as a member of my community board. And so I'm thanking you in advance for this opportunity. First, I believe it was an oversight by Chair Russ to, not to address and recognize the resident leaders who during the pandemic rose to the occasion of taking care of its residents and their respective developments. Given that, I'm asking the Chair to commit to having a recognition ceremony to honor and thank these resident leaders for their hard work, but more importantly, keeping the residents safe. Secondly, NICA developments are over seventy years old. And as the Chair stated, there are issues with mold. These buildings must be demolished and replaced, not patching. But the issue is where do you temporarily locate the residents? I would recommend that you buy indoor-lease hotel motels to house the residents during the demolition and rebuild. And rebuild each run at a time as opposed to renovating in place. According to Section Eighteen demolition, when the renovation costs more than the demolition, then you must demolish and give the residents an opportunity to return when the building is completed. And they can, when they return, they can have an opportunity for homeownership. Thirdly, the Chair continues to forge ahead and consistently choose to ignore and or implement the recommended changes, but more importantly, our requests for better participation in the planning process, listen to your residents and include them from the beginning during, during and with, throughout the process. And I heard the Chair say tonight, that's what they're going to do, they're going to go back to the table and include the residents, and I thank you for that. They must, we must be at the table during the whole process. And fourth, NICA is not Section Three compliant and still do not have a written plan and or policy in place. I've received several calls from companies throughout the country. For me, if I can partner them with some of the public housing residents and, and apply for some of the stimulus money that's going to be coming into our area. So thank you for your thoughts, Chair Russ. And thank you for going back and starting over again so that we can make this right for the residents so that they can be empowered. Because the plan as it stands is not resident engaged, it does not engage the residents, it's, it's a blueprint for performer. It's about the Benjamins. So thank you very much, and I look forward to working with you to make it a better NICA. Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Okay, next speaker, Maria Medina. Maria Medina, please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Learning something today about a complex NICA is. I'm calling, well, actually asked to request to talk. Because security has been a main concern in my developments. And pretty much with the elevator and the elderly, the waste too. I see the budget has everything as far as restructuring and trying to commit to the leaks and molding. But I haven't seen any with security. I've been living in a brand new apartment for a year and a half. I lived in another apartment in the complex for 18 years. And that apartment had multiple leaks. Now, in this apartment, I have some leaks and I have no intercom. Apparently the intercom in this, the whole complex, not only my building, I mean, pretty much even across the street. It's a growing problem with drug, drug addiction, people coming in, defecating, running to the floor, exit doors open. It's problematic to NYPD too when the garage lights are not working properly. You also have structural damage in the park area, the sidewalk that had been like that for years. And I've taken pictures. I've done pretty much everything I empowered, you know, as a tenant, trying to participate. And, you know, with everything going on, I feel like there should be more done as far as security and maintaining the property correctly, especially the grounds. Need to be, you know, sidewalks needs to be replaced, parking lot needs new grounding lighting. The exit doors need, you know, locks, need a new intercoms. I think, I think only five buildings in my complex don't have intercoms. Oh, and the hot water. That's a main problem with it too. You know, I just want to be more secure at home that I'm disabled. And I can walk out peacefully. It's gotten to the point where I had to put a camera in my door. And I've had it plugged out and trying to push it right there. Just hoping that you can, you know, get some stuff resolved, simple things like security.
Thank you, Maria. If you wouldn't mind putting your development information, we have your email address in the Q and A and we can connect with you regarding the issues that you raised. Our next speaker is Reverend Carmen Hernandez.
Hi, I thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to make it very brief. I feel that I demand the NICA hearing for the 20 plan is be canceled because this shouldn't happen. Number one, the tenants are not aware of what is going on. Mr. Ross, I have reached out to him, that I even volunteered to work with him and advise him that he should let every tenant know what's going on. This is, he has used the language or word saying that the tenants agree, which is not true. And my development is 96 unit. My name is Reverend Carmen Hernandez. I am the TA president of 147173 Watson Avenue. And we do not accept the blueprint. We advise that to hold it off and we are holding Mr. Ross accountable to me with all of us. And I think it should hold off to next year until every tenant are aware of what's going on. We are supporting public housing to be protected under the federal law. We are not supporting blueprint whatsoever. So thank you and appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you, Reverend Hernandez. Next speaker is Sofani Joseph.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, how are you doing? I'm Joseph. I'm a community planner and advocacy coordinator at Take Root Justice. Take Root Justice works with grassroots groups, neighborhood organizations, and community coalitions to help make sure that people of color, immigrants, and other low-income residents have an option to build their city and are not pushed out in the name of progress. We want to begin by saying this hearing does not comply with HUD public hearing requirements. Our presence at today's public hearing is illegal. NICA failed to provide the 45 days notice prior to today's public hearing. While NICA's website states that the annual plan was published on June 11th of 2021, our organization, which is a known stakeholder, having testified at prior NICA hearings and which has signed up on various NICA stakeholder listservs, only received notice of the authority's 2022 draft annual plan and hearing on July 11th, a mere 16 days before this hearing. We've heard the same from numerous community partners, including TA presidents, NICA residents, and tenant organizers. As such, NICA has failed to actually provide 45 days notice and is in direct violation of federal notice requirements. NICA's failure to circulate its draft annual plan and notices of this hearing with sufficient notice highlights its ongoing blatant disregard of its obligation to solicit resident and community input. The authority is skirting federal notice requirements to ram through a plan that does not reflect NICA's residents' vision for the future of their respective communities. Over the past year, NICA residents have protested repeatedly about their right to be included in all planning processes from inception and not merely be informed after decisions have been made. These protests urgently address NICA as it has attempted to make deals with private entities to have them take over management of public housing, to secure private investments with public housing, giving the investors the right to foreclose if the public entity cannot pay interest and principal, or to build privately owned housing on the public authorities' playgrounds and open spaces. The fact that the draft plan for fiscal year 2022 includes all of the above strategies despite resident opposition through the grueling months of the pandemic demonstrate that NICA doesn't care what residents and community stakeholders have to say about the future of New York City public housing. In doing so, NICA confirms that they are ignoring repeated resident protests against privatization. The proposed annual plan is substantially unacceptable. In the annual plan for fiscal year 22, NICA continues to plan in reliance on the blueprint, key components of which have already been rejected by the New York State Legislature, NICA residents and allies. The preservation component of the blueprint as described in the executive summary of the draft plan of the Public Housing Preservation Trust. Thank you for the time. We will be submitting our comments written form to those. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph. Next, we have Claudia Perez. Claudia Perez, you can unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I just want to say that this entire plan, and I totally agree with the young lady in front of me. Right now, the issues that we have been having, just to get the people to hear this hearing, because we know that our seniors, every development is a senior development. And if you are doing these Zoom meetings, you need to make sure that the people are able to do so. I have my residents out here where I put it on a projector screen so they can hear and they're seeing this. And the, the issues that we've had, just through with the connections and everything that is an issue there. And it shows that, you know, again, like it was said earlier, we, the resident leaders, the resident council presidents, and the residents are not included in this at all. And I do feel that due to the public-private part, public privatization partnership, that you are totally relinquishing and ignoring the rights for resident management upon the residents inside their developments. Now, we are not saying that we are ready to control the entire development, but if you refer to the HUD regulations, Section 135, it already initiates all of these things that need to be held, you guys need to be held accountable for. Because at the beginning of the creation of public housing, it was to address the homeless issue and to provide secure housing and to not be slum lords. That's what NICA has become, slum lords. You're trying to fix it. And again, you are not putting the residents at the table. And you are not, you are not allowing the residents a future. It is 90, I would say over 60% of the developments are aging developments. And the people who have worked and are paying social security and receiving their pensions, their rents are going up as it is now. And under this new privatization, because that's what it is. And I want Gregory Russ to answer this question. With the implementation of Section 8 public housing, is that the demolishment or the end of Section 9 as it stands? And that's where I'm going to leave it because I'm pretty sure my NICA leaders, they will pick it up from there. But I am for resident management corporations. We could take over all the landscaping. You could hire us to do the cleaning of the buildings. You can also hire us to do all the work around the grounds that would alleviate NICA. We are left out of this plan. We deserve the economic resources through the management services on the property level in which we need to be provided. So, thank you very much. I am Claudia Perez. I am of Washington Houses. My residents, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Next speaker is Helen Redd, Helene Redd.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Helene. I'm in Bailey. I'm one of Bailey Houses residents. The first thing, the first thing I wanted to ask, Greg Russ said something about residents must play a large role in, in the selection of board members. And then he says some of our CCOB and the RAB will nominate two candidates for resident board members. So what you guys trying to do in essence, trying to get rid of the resident council? Because that's what it seems like to me, that you're trying to take, put some other people in control instead of letting the resident, the resident council be in control. And I agree with the two ladies that was beforehand. The residents have to have some input in this. You guys sit there and say that, oh, the residents have input. Now, you had a lawyer telling you that we didn't have no input. So you trying to get, are you trying to get rid of the resident council or reform the resident council? What's, this is what I want, Mr. Russ, how are you going to reform or get rid of the resident council? Because from what I'm seeing and from what I'm reading, they want to put somebody else in control. They want to put somebody else in control of the resident council. I understand NICA needs a lot of repairs and I understand we, but y'all came up with this blueprint without the residents involved. And how do y'all decide what, what, Mr. Russ, you and everybody else need to go to each development and have a meeting with everybody? Because everybody is not Zoom savvy. You understand? Everybody is not computer savvy. So in other words, the tenants are getting left out of your blueprint because they don't know how to get on Zoom. Y'all have these meetings and have them on Zoom, but the other tenant, and then we as the resident council, we have to go back and tell bits and pieces of what y'all planning. So I'm not understanding why, Mr. Russ, you and the team is not meeting, coming to the development and having a schedule where y'all can have, have a big meeting with the residents. And have, if y'all say residents involved, then let the residents be involved. Don't just do this without us being involved, because to me, it seems politically incorrect. It seems inhumane, you know? It, it seems inhumane just to do this without the residents being involved. And I live in Bailey Houses and most of these people are elderly in this house, in this building. So, and they're not on Zoom, they're not at these meetings, because some of them got a lot of issues going on. So how can y'all get involved and come into the housing authority and having a big meeting? Because I haven't seen none of you at these housing authorities yet. Not yet. But y'all can get on these Zoom, get on Zoom and say all these things. I'm just saying, think about it. It's a thought. I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Redd. So we will be in touch with you directly to answer those questions because tonight is not an exchange, but we do want to clarify your concerns. Okay, next we have Alec Blade.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, so I'm Alec Blade. I live in Weekville's Gardens. It used to be NICA, but now it's like Section 8. So I, first I was complaining about the fact that, you know, when it comes to like handling with NICA and seeing how like the customer service thing, everything gets slowed down and then things never happen, you know? It's been three years that I've been like trying to change my name on the official document. And they finally did it because I made complaints during this meeting, you know, before questions. So all of a sudden, now they changed my name, which I find like totally like shady. But anyway, I've noticed that a lot of people here are, are concerned about this thing, but they have straight up facts. As far as, I lived in NICA for like six years. Y'all look at us like numbers. To us, yeah, I feel like we're not people to you. We're just people to just store somewhere just to get funding, just to box us in like objects, you know? And I've never seen, like, I, I really want to question, do any of the people that from, yeah, that are trying to push this 2022 plan, do you, any, any of y'all even live in any of these NICA buildings? Do you see what really goes on? Or are we just like, you know, oh, they're just ghetto people. They're just like, you know, people that are not gentrified, we should just push them on these themes, you know, they'll, they'll follow along. Because I'm just straight up, you know, I noticed that it is a complete mistreatment. Y'all forget that we are people. No matter what kind of flavor of life we come from, we're still people. And we shouldn't be treated like we're just expendable. We're just things that we could just place anywhere and just do things behind our back because that's, that's what caused civil wars. That's what caused revolutions. And it's like, is that what y'all looking forward to? That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Blade. Next speaker is Rodrick McCord. Rodrick McCord, you can unmute yourself.
Hello.
Hi.
Hey, hi. I just got a couple of suggestions, really. I don't really have any complaints. I just think that a lot of the buildings, you guys should have funding for orderlies so that it's a 24-hour job of somebody who is on a shift right now to just do nothing but clean. Just completely, that's just their job. And then another budget for security, like you guys should hire Paladin Security, our doorman and stuff, just for crime or whatever. And that'll probably make it easier and make you guys want to actually go out and see the building. I think, I think maybe a city beautification ordinance by the city could possibly allow funding for orderlies like that. But that's pretty much it. Just two of my suggestions. I think you guys need security. And I, I like a security detail or a complete security company or orderlies that can work 24 hours a day. And last but not least, Chinese isn't a language. Mandarin is a language, Cantonese language, but Chinese people actually don't speak Chinese. But just so you guys, anyways, peace out, NICA.
Thank you, Mr. McCord. Next speaker is Judith Smith. Judith Smith, you can unmute yourself.
Okay, hi. Well, what I, I'm going to piggy bank, piggyback off a lot of what the people were saying. And I wrote that in the chat is I don't understand why we have four groups that's representing the tenants and 99% of the tenants don't know who they are. They've never come to us with these plans explaining to us what's going on. The only time we hear about it is when we get an email. So I don't understand that. That needs to be restructured, restructured. because the tenants don't need four groups representing them. And we don't know who they are and they are not speaking for us. And my other, the other question I have is about the home ownership. Um, you're talking about people having stake in NYCHA, calling them stakeholders. Well, I've lived in my apartment for over thirty years. I'm a stakeholder. And if you can bring outside people to have a stake in my apartment, then I would like to be the first one to have a stake. Because you can make these apartments mix income, mix, um, how do you say it? Mixed housing, mixed housing. People, some people can own the apartment. There can be Section Eight. It's a whole lot of ways this can be done. But before you bring someone outs from the outside taking a stake in, in these apartments and investing money in these apartments, you can give people a mortgage to invest in their own apartment. And you talk about building wealth and generational wealth and the, the, um, income equality gap. Well, that would be a good way to close it. A lot of the residents in, on NYCHA are civil servants. They can afford their apartment. So I would like that to be put on the table. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next speaker is Priscilla Brown, Priscilla Brown.
Yes, hi. I also agree with, um, the comments that were made. And, um, I do have mold in my building, in my closet. I took out a box and there was like molds on it. And, um, yeah, I'm coming from low to, low-street houses. And, um, I'm disabled and I have MS. So I'm not able to really do anything myself. And my niece lives with me and she helps me. And I was wondering like because of, I don't know if they're going to update the, uh, for the lease, if I would be able to add her to the lease because she's not my birth daughter or, um, anything like that. So they were not, I was not able to, uh, basically add her to my lease. So I wanted to know would they be able to update, were they gonna update things like that? Because she's been living with me for a while and she's been helping me. But they were, I wasn't able to basically put her on my lease. And I don't know if you guys are gonna basically update who you can add to the lease as far as family members. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown. If you wouldn't mind, please put your contact information in the Q and A box. We have, uh, who can connect with you directly.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Marquis Jenkins.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, how you doing? Uh, as was stated, my name is Marquis Jenkins. Today, I'm here to speak on behalf of the residents to preserve public housing. The residents to preserve public housing is a citywide resident group, which also includes members of NYCHA Citywide Council of Residents. We aim to preserve public housing by advocating for, by advocating for adequate services and increasing resident pop, increasing resident decision-making authority. The residents to preserve public housing rejects this plan. As was stated earlier, this hearing is in violation of the NYCHA City for Rules and Regulations, not giving residents adequate time to prepare, testify, and give credible feedback on this plan. Typically, the housing, typically the housing authority holds borough-wide meeting in each borough so that resident information session, so that residents can ask questions and get clarity on the plan. And this year, that did not happen. We are concerned that this plan is, this plan proposes continued rad developments when there has not been a real evaluation of the rad plants that I've went through thus far. There have been several, several conversions, which resulted in changes, which resulted in displacement. And yet there has not been an evaluation. And as you know, the residents to preserve public housing is against the Blueprint for Change proposal. This draft agency plan is largely centered around the Blueprint for Change proposal. Residents have been very clear at hearings, at rallies, and in resident-led meetings stating that they do not approve of this plan for a number of reasons. One of those reasons is that this plan opens up the housing authority and the developments where residents live up to foreclosure. Further, this plan was introduced during COVID-19, when many, when public housing residents were hit twice as hard. Gregory Ross's attention to this blueprint ignored what was really needed for residents during the time of COVID-19. I see this elaborate plan around the blueprint and yet I see no elaborate plan about protecting residents against COVID-19. Simply put, Gregory Ross is unfit to run NYCHA, and we are calling for the removal of Gregory Ross. The residents to preserve public housing are saying no to this plan. We will not approve of any plan that does not include resident input. We will not approve of any plan that includes the Blueprint for Change proposal and rat. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Um, next speaker is Lisa Kenner. Lisa Kenner, you can unmute yourself. Okay, do we have, uh, Nadia Horn? Nadia Horn, you can unmute yourself. Did you want to provide testimony?
Yeah, I'm deaf, I'm, I, I'm deaf.
The person is deaf? Can you turn their camera on, please?
Um, I'm daddy.
As the tech person. Ms. Horn, you can turn on your camera. You've been, uh...
Okay, hi, everyone. Thank you very much for that. Um, so, hi, I see myself here. So, thank you very much again for providing the opportunity for public comment. I'm wondering if there is any accessibility plans uh, to add deaf equipment, accessible equipment for folks who are deaf and don't hear, for example, also the elevator. I am very afraid because I don't hear. I always have my phone with me. But is there maybe some contact information for an overnight thing? Something for more safety purposes for people who like, who are deaf and hard of hearing? Um, I have asthma as well as, you know, just not knowing how long it's going to take until I get someplace, how long until if I'm stuck in the elevator, so people are going to get there? Because I'm deaf, so I don't hear that there's been a call put out.
Okay, um, so if you can ask Ms. Horn if she's able to put her contact information in the Q and A box, and then we'll contact her directly. Otherwise, she can look out for an email because we have her email address.
Ah, this, uh, just so you know, like Zoom is really difficult to manage for many of us. So I don't even know how to get to the Q and A portion. Um...
Okay, no problem. Can you ask Ms. Horn which development she lives in?
DeSanto, I think is what it is.
Is it Dehostos?
Maybe it is Dehostos, yes. I think maybe I was just misspelling it wrong. But you, yeah, it, it recently changed its name. So they changed it so much, I can't keep track, but, um...
Does she live in Manhattan?
I do, yes.
Okay, so we will, um, we have her email address. We will make sure that, um, we connect with her through email, if that's okay.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate that and thank you for turning on the video.
Thank you so much. Okay. Next we have, uh, Mary McGee. Mary McGee, you can unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, my name is Mary McGee. I'm a resident at Fulton Houses. I just want to thank you all for having this meeting. And just to just make some comments. The whole, just the way that NYCHA goes about these transformations into, um, privatizing the development, it's wrong. They need to communicate with residents. Maybe they wouldn't get so much backlash. Things need to be explained and with truths, not lies a- and things that can be changed. When you're considering these things, residents need to be put first. And residents should always be put at the table. Not just resident leaders or the CCOP, no offense to anybody. But the majority of people don't understand what's going on. They don't know what can be done and what can't be done. And this needs to be explained. As for NYCHA and the blueprint and this public trust, the problem doesn't lie, and I, I'm not blaming the chairman or anybody that works for NYCHA, but there's no trust within NYCHA. The city, the state, elected officials, residents do not trust NYCHA. So how can we trust you with this public trust when there's no communications with residents? Our voices matter. We matter. Maybe rad may be good for certain developments, but you have to get the, the information from the residents. A lot of residents want rad, a lot of residents don't. But you need to give us that respect, that common courtesy because these are our homes. Or you looking at is numbers, money. But you know what? These are our homes. These are our lives that you're dealing, you're messing with. So if NYCHA was to open those doors to communication, be truthful, then things may be different. But until you do that, we won't trust you. It's very hard to trust somebody who keeps deceiving us. So that's just an important lesson from NYCHA. If it wasn't for protesters, Fulton would be in a different direction than it is now. I thank you for your time. I hope you take my words into consideration and put residents first before dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Next speaker is Manhattan Borough President, Gail Brewer.
Thank you very much. I think I am, yep, you can hear me.
Yep, we can hear you.
Um, thank you very much. I am Gail Brewer, I'm the Manhattan Borough President, and I want to thank the entire NYCHA board. Uh, this year's draft PHA plan contends big goals, as you know. I heard earlier from Chair Russ, reorganizing NYCHA's leadership structure, uh, the idea of this trust that he talks about containing uh, all the Section Eight issues for 62,000 units and all the mitigation against mold and lead and heating problems, the elevator allergies and pest infestation, infestations, all of which, you know. They're supposedly gonna improve the quality of life for residents. But one of the issues that has come up over and over again is the lack of input from residents. And we know that well. And I also want to talk about that and communication, but also issues of waste management. That's one small part of what you're talking about. I know that the federal monitor in the, uh, Capitol Plan, June 17th, will unlock funding for sensible improvements like enlarging the garbage chute in fifty developments. That should have been done a long time ago, but I know it'll make a huge issue. That's one part of what I want to talk about, all this waste management. Second, you gotta do the communication. That's really necessary. As you know, and the chair knows, because I see him, I go to Every Family Day Manhattan. And I've met recently even people working on good PAC projects, as Mary McGee talked about, some of them are good. But what's not happening is discussion about waste management plan, the newly formed waste management and pest control team. And it's all that issue about how do you get communication to improve? Because in some cases, they're great developers, there's great tenant leadership, there's great NYCHA staff, but there isn't an understanding that there's no way that you need to start from scratch on some of these issues. Now, not everybody is Diana Blackwell, not everybody has that kind of reach. Some of them are going really well, but there's a whole lot that are not. And you heard earlier from Dehostos and I know, uh, problems also at Wise Towers. So I want to see a really, uh, deep waste infrastructure upgrade, but I want people to communicate. Communicate is an issue. Uh, we all know what happened, eh, I think positively at Chelsea Fulton Elliott, uh, Fulton Chelsea Elliott. That's not what's happening elsewhere. Let me give an example. The Brownstones on the Upper West Side, only because the tenant leader read about the PAC rad taking place at the Brownstones, that's how she found out. That's not how we have to do it. You have to have a communication. So I want to say my issues are particularly as we do some of these programs, you've got to have more communication on what already exists in terms of waste management. And if you're gonna do any of these discussions, they have to have the kind of, of dealing support that went on at Fulton Chelsea Elliott. That is real tenant input. And I want to end, underline that for this plan. So I look forward to working with you and the residents to make NYCHA a great place to live. But if you don't have this kind of tenant communication, it's not gonna help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Borough President. Our next speaker is John Duffy.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Duffy and I'm here on behalf of the Environmental Justice Initiative, uh, who is counsel to Smith and St. Nicholas Tenants Association. As NYCHA develops a new organizational plan, it is essential that environmental impacts be identified to ensure that there are no negative environmental consequences as a result of this transformational plan. Firsthand accounts at Smith Housing have shown what happens when there's been insufficient environmental assessments and mitigation. We believe it puts not just the residents at Smith, but all residents of NYCHA at grave risk of suffering negative health impacts stemming directly from the poor management of their assets. These environmental concerns include both indoor and outdoor factors with increased heat waves, flooding, poor indoor and outdoor, uh, air quality, COVID, and various other climate change-related events. Uh, the Environmental Justice Initiative believes that an environmental assessment is required as a matter of law, as stated both in the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act and, uh, the National Environmental Policy Act. A change in management structure without careful thought will lead to an even greater environmental mismanagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Kenesha Vincent?
Hello?
Hi.
Yes, hi. I have some concerns and some comments. Due to NYCHA, the communication is very poor. The misinformation, um, that's taken toll. Um, the tenants, the neighbors, you know, um, and also the repairs. And I thank God that I'm being heard right now because in my life, I went through a lot being in NYCHA, not being heard, um, through millions of things. Okay, um, I've been in NYCHA for twenty-something years. Um, the respect, the customer service, the people you deal with, um, and, and housing period was very poor, very, very poor. Um, me, I had damages, okay? I've come from Reese Houses, okay, Lower Manhattan. And I have repairs that needed to be done over a year. And I have repairs that needed to be done over a year, back and forth to court, lead paint testing, which they didn't notify me yet of, okay, um, which I know I had lead in my house. They didn't notify me anything, um. The damages stayed in my house for over a year. And I mean, these are serious damages, okay? Ceiling, the roof, um, not just plastering mold. It was just so much work that needed to be done and so much tickets and me trying to fight. I lost my job because of this situation, okay? Um, coming and going back and forth to appointments and trying to make the appointments that they have to repair the house, and I have to leave work, you know, is, is just horrible. It's horrible. Um, another thing I'm going to address the PSA for, that the ones that work with housing, they are, they're very poor also, um, as far as for the community. It's just, it's a, it's just a disgrace, and it needs to get better. It needs more work, you know? It just needs to be done. A lot of things needs to be done. And it's all starting with communication. And we also need to get more involved in our tenants, our tenants, our neighbors, things of that nature. Everybody is not.
Ms. Vincent, before you go, are you still at Reese Houses?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so we will um, get in touch with you to get you some answers to the um, individual concerns you raised. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daniel Barber. Okay, I think. Mr. Barber. Okay, um. Andrea Johnson. Andrea Johnson, you can unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hi.
Um, everybody that said what I needed to say. I, they done put, they done said everything that I wanted to say, so I don't need to say anything else.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Andrew Corbald. Okay, moving on to Barbara Stanley. Barbara Stanley, you can unmute yourself. Jeanette Rivera.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, hi. Um, I just wanted to address that there's a lot, um, things that are not done. I'm with, I'm, I'm with the Amsterdam Development. And um, there's, I don't know, it's, it's come to the news a couple times about rat infestation. It's ridiculous. You know, they, I don't think that they doing a good job in with this infestation. And also, um, I do give complaints on some, um, fixing and things like that. And they tell me that um, they're, they're like, not enough people to hire, you know, like, one person could do, they just overload, um, uh, maintenance worker overload with jobs with, you know, with tickets. It's crazy. It's crazy. Um, also, the cleaning around the development, it's like, it's poor, you know? Um, some of the maintenance workers, they don't even want to do their job. And also in the buildings, I, I complain because sometimes they don't want to clean, clean the buildings. Um, I complain about that. And I don't know, it, it's just something gotta change, you know? Something's gotta change. Um, I'm constantly like, like, what's going on? You know, you guys don't want to, you know, hire more people. They need more, more, you know, help. And they don't, you know, um, you know, I, I have an open mind, and I, and I go straight to the office, and I address my opinions and everything, and it's like, they're like, you know, like, they don't care. It makes no sense that we have to live like this. You know, I, I could say a, a like, a handful of people, you know, throwing things out the window, which doesn't make any sense, but they should put some cameras, you know, so they could see who's doing what. You know, is, I don't know, it's just, man, a, a lot of people that I came on here, they had, you know, that a lot of good points. They made a lot of sense. You know, I agree with them most as well, you know, as far as, you know, NCHA and everything, and, you know, I agree with them as well. And because a lot of people, they're not computer literate, they don't have Zoom, like other person said. And they should just come out and reach out to people. That's all I gotta say. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rivera. Um, you do sound like you're an active advocate in your developments. I just want to also encourage you, if you're not already connected with your resident association, um, meetings start back up in September. So please, um, you do have an active resident association in Amsterdam Houses. So if you're not connected, please definitely um, get in touch with them. Okay, uh, we have Barbara Stanley. Barbara Stanley, you can unmute yourself.
Unmute, you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, it's just that I have mold, like, in my bathroom, but I know I haven't addressed it like I should have been, but I was trying on my own to um, get some cleaners, like Moldex or something not working, but I know I have to address it to the um, management office. And I read, I haven't, I know, I be so busy so much. I had a program that said, y'all deal with mold busters.
Yes, um, would you like us to connect you? Um, we can reach out. What development do you live in, Ms. Stanley?
St. Nicholas.
St. Nicholas, okay. If you don't mind, if you can put your contact information in the Q and A box, we can reach you directly. Otherwise, we will um, send an email because we have your email address.
Okay, alright, I'll do that. Alright, that's it.
Thank you. Okay, Tyrone Ball. Tyrone Ball, please unmute yourself.
Hello, Tyrone Ball, how are you doing today?
Good, Mr. Ball, how are you?
Alright, it seems to be the same thing. You know, this whole plan came out, and people really did not know about it, and it's so confusing, it needs to be further explained. I had a meeting in June, and people did actually come out and try to explain it. But it needs to reach a wider populace, so people actually know what's going on. And the other thing I want to say is this. With the Capitol Plan items that were supposed to be done last year, when are they gonna get started for this year? Or are they gonna start this year, or is this another year and everything falls behind? We do elevators, I saw another million dollars in structure that's supposed to go to St. Nicholas. And we're also supposed to be getting new boilers. And you guys can't put in boilers in the fall and then have it go through the winter. That's not gonna work. It's simply gonna be, boiler, the temporary boilers break down, and then you just have more problems than what you begin with. So that's pretty much all. I had to say most of the other resident leaders and other residents spoke, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Deidra Melton. Deidra Melton, you can unmute yourself. Okay, we'll move on to Emmanuel Martinez.
Good afternoon, can uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Ah, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Ms. Hudson. So we're surprised.
Same here.
So I have concerns with the annual plan with regards to Section Three. Um, also with regards to the impact that these conversions are having on RAD, I mean, that these RAD conversions are having within the community and with the households. We have significant problems. Um, and also, the fact that there's no accountability to transformation plan, and the reorganization restructuring plan has no accountability within it. It's so, ultimately what we're doing is we're taking the same dirty water and putting it, putting it in a new bucket. And we're not filtering out the dirty water. A lot of the issues that are being had in NCHA is found that the local management, at the local development, accountability there is not being held properly. And that is having an impact on the quality of life and the safety and security of our residents. Um, there is, again, want to come back to Section Three. I don't understand why we don't have, why NCHA does not feel it necessary for them to put a more explanatory or more detailed plan in regards to Section Three compliance, what their role is, and the dollar value that Section Three is worth to the community. We're talking about billions of dollars issued in contracts. Uh, for example, here in South Jamaica Houses, I'm the resident council for, resident council president for South Jamaica Houses. Forgive me, I didn't introduce myself. My name is Emmanuel Martinez, Manny Martinez. I'm the resident council president for South Jamaica Houses. Currently, as an example, in South Jamaica Houses, we have an exclusive combined contract of forty-three million dollars under Section Three, also including the resident employment program, which is fifteen percent of the labor cost. Um, there's only nine jobs being offered and no training. The, the notices that went out are not consistent with the Section Three clause. I know that this particular contract is under the old Section Three rule. We have a new Section Three regulation. But under this old rule, and consistent with the decades prior, the notices that goes up around the development, which is approved by Reese and approved by NCHA, have not, are not compliant. And if NCHA is approving non-compliant documents, and according to the regulations, and also in accordance to the contractors' contract, because the Section Three clause goes into that contract, then we have a serious issue, and we have a serious economic loss and disadvantage for our communities. Just to think that our communities have lost billions of dollars over the decades, and Section Three is heartbreaking. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I wish you all a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Erica Overton.
Hi, hi, everyone. I'm Erica Overton from Assembly Member Linda Rosenthal's office. I'm reading testimony on her behalf. Um, so I'm Assembly Member Linda Rosenthal, and I proudly represent the Upper West Side and House Kitchen in Manhattan, which includes three New York City Housing Authority developments, Harborview Terrace, Amsterdam Houses, and Amsterdam Houses Edition. Um, I would like to thank Chair Russ for the opportunity to comment on NCHA's draft public housing agency plan for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two. The COVID-nineteen pandemic trained a bright light on the problems that have long plagued public housing residents. While millions of Americans began sheltering in the safety of their homes when COVID-nineteen hit, NCHA residents simply did not have that luxury. Against the backdrop of the pandemic, NCHA residents continued to battle the city over chronic unaddressed leaks, mold, crumbling malls, nonexistent elevator service, and rat infestations. They managed this while simultaneously working and teaching their children from home, all struggling to find safe, affordable childcare. As a result of mismanagement and prolonged financial disinvestment, the conditions at NCHA developments throughout the city have deteriorated over the years, such that living conditions in some developments are near universally deplorable. NCHA is in the midst of a deep financial crisis without an immediate infusion of significant capital. The squalid and unhealthy conditions that too many NCHA residents contend with on a daily basis will only worsen and threaten the integrity of our nearly two-hundred-thousand units of public housing. Um, while I have deep concerns about NCHA's blueprint for change, particularly in its current form, given NCHA's financial situation and the precariousness precariousness of federal funding, a plan that stakeholders agree on must be crafted on a set of guiding principles. First, it is imperative that it explicitly protects NCHA against privatization efforts. And as I previously discussed with Chair Russ, the blueprint must enshrine the rights of NCHA residents and carve out a clear role for them in shaping the process moving forward. NCHA must provide tenant associations with resources or consult, or consult and retain their own attorney to review temporary relocation access agreements when NCHA is considering making repairs. Community engagement must be prioritized to build trust and garner support from the NCHA community. Multiple town halls at developments, roundtables with resident leaders, and every community board, and door-to-door outreach must be included in NCHA's plan. Additionally, NCHA must provide communities with a clear understanding of when and how their developments will eventually be rehabilitated. Residents consistently complain about NCHA's indifference to their living conditions and its failure to treat tenants with base of respect. It is imperative that the public trust directly engage with NCHA residents instead of simply replicating the same apathetic behavior in the form of a new entity. The blueprint must elucidate the processes by which tenants can support needed repairs, a timeline for when those repairs will be completed after a work order is processed, and a transparent tracking system so tenants can monitor, monitor and document NCHA's response. For the public trust to earn the confidence of the community and elected officials, the city must reform the way tenants make and track repairs to ensure much needed work is being addressed. My turn is up. Thank you. You also, I'll submit the rest of the testimony to uh.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Overton. Okay, Deidra Melton. Deidra Melton, you can unmute yourself. Alright, we'll move on to Rosa Linda Tell.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Um, I wanted to say, you know, I used to be a TA president and a vice president, and currently I'm a minister of community and a patient advocate. You know, um, I've been living here for over twenty years, and I seen four different chairman passing through. NCHA has always been a mess. We are not giving uh, the chairman Russ a chance. All the others did not, did nothing or better, NCHA. Our chairman under the Bloomberg administration introduced the PAC that ran. Chairman Russ is trying to, to, to save what's left of housing. Yes, tenants need to know if there is going, if their development is gonna be under PAC or RAD. Uh, uh, our resident association leaders may have their own hidden agendas, some of them, not all. And not, not the residents' best interest. I have been to many Blueprint for Change meetings, and I'm completely for it. There are many tenants who are against the change because they may lose their three-bedroom apartments when they only qualify for one bedroom. Some workers may be against it because they think they're gonna lose their jobs, and they give misinformation to each other and to the residents and to the workers. We have to be realistic and understand that housing was created to fund city agencies and can't afford fixing. We need to pass this Blueprint for Change, and they also have to remove some titles that are taking too much money from NCHA itself, like the law department. As for tenants running how, the housing management, that's not gonna be a good idea, because many of the employees are housing residents, and they don't care. Imagine running, running it. Please give Mr. Russ a chance, because he is definitely trying. We cannot just go ahead and try to knock down what he's trying to do, because we have some hidden agendas. Oh, he's giving us the information. Unfortunately, not all tenants are coming out. We're being misinformed, and he's trying to save what's left, and he puts it to you there. Things are not gonna be fixed. But if we don't let him pass this, I mean, where is the money gonna come from? The sky? It's not gonna come to, from the sky. Let us move forward and give him a chance to fix it. Yeah, there's some things that have to be fixed through this blueprint for change, but we can't stop it before we have it going. Alright, people? I'm all for it, you know? And stop blocking him. We've been blocking it too much. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm, I really appreciate what you're doing for us, and I feel that we're gonna have a change. Have a blessed night, everybody, and thank you again, and God bless.
Thank you, Ms. Tell. Tanya Williams.
Hi, good evening, good afternoon. I'm coming from Cypress Development in Brooklyn of East New York. I've been living here for 18 years, and I feel honored to be here to see, you know, what's going on because I am one of the tenants that have been lost in what's going on with housing. And there's a lot of things that's concerning into like my apartment. There's a lot of things that's out in our community. But with the blueprint, they were sending like us a letter in the mail, and then next thing you know, you didn't hear nothing, now you hear something. But I'm one of the ones that I've worked. And in my development, I have a lot of complaints on my apartment, and then I have a lot of medical issues where I have letters from the doctors stating that I have to be removed out my apartment. But then this year, when the housing development called me telling me that I needed to do my annual income, I go online and did it myself. I see for the annual income, there's no disability written in of medical reasons what's going on with me as well as my three children. We're all asthmatic, but I have COPD. I have a lot of things against me medically. And then they're sending people to my house to do repairs when I'm at work. At work, you're calling me telling me you need to fix my bathroom where the ceiling is falling down, and then you keep sending someone there to take pictures. And then when I stay home for work, nothing is being accomplished. No one's coming. So we need to all come aboard, and like I'm pennybacking off someone what they said in the comments, with our local development, with the ones that's sitting in there, they need to work better with us, and we all need to have communication where we all could be on the same accord. And if I didn't join on this or get the little emails here and there, I would have never knew nothing about that you can get a home. So we don't have the opportunity to be where we want to try to get a home. It's like we're being confined into the developments where it's no circular information coming around for us to have an opportunity if we want to stay in housing or do we want to go into a home. So it's not being enough communication sent out for us to have the opportunity because some of us want to grow, some of us want to move on. You use housing for a step to stool. That's all I have to say because my minute is up, but I need to get aboard.
Yep, before you go, Ms. Williams, before you leave, I want to check to see if you can give your contact information in the Q&amp;A box. Are you able to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, please do so because we want to connect you with resources to a number of things that you said. And then we also want to get some follow-up on your transfer. So put your information in, and we'll follow up with you, okay?
It's not allowing me to answer it.
Okay, so you're still at Cypress Hills?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Okay, so we will send you an email, and we'll make sure to get in touch with you.
Thank y'all so much, and good luck to all. Let us all be safe and blessed.
Thank you.
And thank y'all, and I will be participating as long as I am in there with y'all. Thank y'all for all that I'm hearing from y'all. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Okay. Lisa Kenner.
Good evening. Do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, good evening. Good evening to everybody. I don't know what happened before. I was trying to get in, and then they wouldn't let me in. Well, I was talking about, and I hear what everybody was saying about the blueprint, which everybody don't have the information. And being that we was going through this COVID-19, a lot of people still didn't get the information. And I'm not for the blueprint to be passed on until everybody's at the table. You know, getting that opportunity is about opportunity. Also, my thing is about with the COVID-19, I have some people, they died in their apartment, and that's over a year ago, and that apartment still haven't been cleaned out. So that affects everybody on the line. I've been to the management, so when you talk about the blueprint and things changing, my thing is how it's going to change if you got the same people in there. So somebody needs to come and lease to see who died in the apartment in the COVID-19, and the apartment still haven't been cleaned, and it's been over a year. So when you're going to start taking care of little things like that, then you can start making big things. But otherwise, I'm against the blueprint until we see some change in there because to me, things got worse. People don't want to clean, and they get a paycheck. You talk to the management, it's like they don't care. And I've been here 62 years. I care, and I know a lot of other people care where they live at. I don't have to live in a home. This is our home. But we have to take care of this before you can move on. And just getting people other positions, and they making more money, and I ain't got nothing against the vice president, whatever you want, but you just keep giving people more money, and you're not fixing what you're supposed to fix here. You know, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Kenner. Caller 2199, if you press star six, you can unmute yourself. 2199.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Ms. Cunningham. I just briefly wanted to speak on what is happening with New York City Housing Authority. I wanted to share that I lived in New York City Housing Authority for over 50 years. And New York City Housing Authority has been facing many of the same issues. Clumming, elevators, pests. Where's the money? I am also needed repairs in my apartment. Yes, they do get done for the most part, but it's the toxicity of it all. Two days ago, they came and they said they was removing mold in the bathroom. That's fine, but every two to four years, it seems to develop more mold in the same areas. The smell is awful, the fumes, it lasts for a long time. I have no idea what it's doing to my health or my family's health. The elevators are out. Every two, I mean, two to four times a week, there's no intercom, but the downstairs door is locked. I have a disability. There's no way for me to open the door. Also, the apartment itself is overcrowded. I have my family here, and I wanted to touch on the fact that NYCHA does not listen to its tenants. There's no communication. NYCHA should know when a family is growing and needs to grow apart. I have a disability. My entire family doesn't have a disability. I would benefit from an accessible apartment. Not my entire family wouldn't. There are dual incomes within my family. So this can be done easily to separate us. I also wanted to state about bringing stakeholders to the table. Yes, that's something that y'all should consider. You know, like I said, I lived here over 50 years. My child has lived here over 26 years in this very same apartment that I reside in right now. I think I touched on everything. If someone could get back to me and answer those questions, I would greatly appreciate it. I wish everyone a great evening and be well.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Before you go, what development do you live in?
I live in Jacob Rees.
Okay.
And I don't have access to email. I don't communicate via email.
I have your phone number.
Okay.
Yes.
Feel free on my address. Feel free, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks again. Thank you.
Sonia Diaz.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, I don't live in NYCHA. My daughter lives there. I used to live there for like 12 years in Revensville Houses. The only thing I could say is that that development is very, very dirty. You know, they hardly keep that place clean. My daughter's apartment is a mess. The repairs take a very long time for them to come. Even though you issue the numbers for them to come, I called the office to help her out because she's working, I'm working. Sometimes I go to her house, to her apartment, so I could be able to be there so they could come and do repairs. They made me wait. Sometimes I waste my whole day waiting. It's a day off that I'm taking from work. The neighbors, you know, they have their cameras. I can put everything on housing, saying that they don't do part of the job. But, you know, neighbors, they are people that they live in the building, are destroying the building. Why they're not doing anything about it and allowing these people to continue doing this kind of thing in housing? They just, you know, people should be grateful for living in a place that they could afford to pay the rent. But at least there had to be some rules, some way for some of the people that are destroying and doing, you know, vandalize, to be able to get rid of them. So all the people that work or all the people that really needs to have those apartments could be able to, you know, keep living in it. And that has become a big problem. You know, I lived there for 12 years, and I moved out and left the apartment for my daughter because I almost, you know, beat up the next door neighbor because I work, and she doesn't work, and she had the music all the way to 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 in the morning. No consideration of the neighbors. I have an elderly lady in front of me that I used to live, that still live there, and she couldn't sleep, and we complained to NYCHA, and the people in the office did not do anything. You know, she's still there. She does whatever she wants. Now she has come a little bit. But it's still, the problem sometimes is the people living in the building. And it had to be a way so we could also be able to live, you know, decently. Just because we live in NYCHA doesn't mean that we're not people that, you know, should be able to get a response. I send emails for the repairs. I do whatever I can, and I don't see that nothing is happening in that neighborhood. It's the Revensville Houses, and I'm pretty sure you have a lot of complaint about that development. That's all I'll say because the rest that I wanted to say, all the people have said already.
Okay, Ms. Diaz, if you don't mind putting your daughter's contact information in the Q&amp;A box so that we can follow up on the repair issues.
All right, thank you. I will.
Okay, Enrique. Enrique Goldmundo.
Hello?
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
My solution about the problem that we have right now, the communication, is that we need I love the blueprint program. It has wonderful features. They are unique. If you look at them, if you really, and you understand what Mr. Ross is doing, you find out it's amazing the way he's saving housing. He's saving public housing for a long period of time. The problem that we have is, yes, we need to include. We need to be part of that process. We need to feel that we are part in the process of creating capital because the problem is budget. And we have solutions, the human resource that housing has. And we need to focus the community gardens, the community centers. They are really, because right now, New York lost one seat in the Congress. We really, we were thinking about the federal government, but now things change. And we need to believe in leadership. The human resource, the housing hubs. This leadership will come from women. That's the leadership, specifically black women. We need to make a call to this leadership to save housing and to support Mr. Ross's program, to have a look at it. Yes, we need to include the community in the creation of capital. And how we can do, we can move mountains, and we can save housing along with Mr. Ross. But the plan that Mr. Ross has is no other way. And it's really what we feel is we are left out, and we cannot understand why. What is the problem? When there is, so the community gardens, the community centers, the free markets, these that will create, again, the communities that we need with leadership. And this call I'm making in the last second I have to black women leadership to save housing. Thank you so much. I love you all, everybody, what you're doing. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Goldmundo. Dana Eldon.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Dana Eldon. I'm from St. Mary's Park Houses in South Bronx. And first, I'd like to say that the negligence of NYCHA to include tenant participation from conception under the 964 regulation is most apparent. The lack of transparency has been insufficient in ways of staffing, maintenance, and contracting. And of course, our seasonal workers who are now being ignored and substitute for city court. I find it hard to believe that NYCHA has not considered that this 300-plus-page document is foreign to many readers, and it does not provide a comprehensible format for resident leaders to review pertinent information directed and dissected for resident leaders to understand budgets, programs, and plans for their respective developments. Subsequently, many resident leaders are not invited in past spending contracts and staffing as needed. And with this report, we are blinded as to the present and future plans for their developments. We are not included from conception, which I feel is beyond insulting, not to mention that no formal audit has been done or results provided to leaders. Where has the money been spent? What guarantees that future monies won't be misused again? A looping history of repeat failures is what I am looking for when I deal with NYCHA. All my best inquiries are related to the blueprint, which includes the transformation plan. I refuse to be bullied by NYCHA, nor will my residents, and take a signed backseat while NYCHA has its way with our lives, especially dealing with the large portion of NYCHA residents who are seniors, and I'm one of them. Is the dollar more important than the lives of people? Have you no moral substance? Have you considered that the mandated Section 8 push could do to many seniors that will not be able to afford market rent if their apartments are not fully funded? They would be responsible for paying rent at high amounts, and in many cases, they would not be able to do that. So does that mean homelessness for them? Who does that with a clean conscience? NYCHA is looking like a slumlord right now, and no basketball court is going to change that. It is apparent that NYCHA has been reckless and greedy for a long time. Money being the root of all evil is written in the cornerstone of 250 Broadway. And it's a new era for many of us, and we are not trusting NYCHA anymore. It's time for NYCHA to be accountable for its failures and figure out how to address these issues. But stop trying to make choices for us who have already suffered from your failures. Thank you.
Okay, next we have. Okay, uh, next we have. Isis Murray.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm from Forest Houses in Bronx. I just wanted to comment on, um, you know, the, the situation with elevators, building maintenance, um, the infestation of the rats in the area. I know it's all been said, but we really have to work on getting these things done. Um, I have a ninety-six-year-old cousin who lives in the projects. She, she needs her house painted. And the past two years, I've put in tickets personally for her and it still hasn't been painted. They said they were coming. I had her, her grandkids come from out of state to move everything to the middle of the floor. No one came and she had an appointment. So it's just little things like that that, that make the residents feel, you know, like they don't matter. Um, she also has pipes in her bathroom that they came and shut off. I bought her a washing machine. They shut off the pipes and said that, well, we can't come back to do anything for that because we don't want, um, I guess washing machines to be running in the apartments. This, my family has lived in this apartment and housing for sixty-five years. My mother just passed in February and I don't have a problem with getting maintenance things done in my apartment. But I advocate for myself. She's ninety-six. She doesn't want to constantly be on the phone. And if I can't take out the time to do it for her, then things don't get done. They don't want to hear her. They try to pacify her and tell her people will come, that people will come. And I guess look at it and say, okay, we'll be back and they don't come back. Um, I live in building ten in Forest Houses. The elevator service is out maybe three to four times a week. The elevator doesn't stop on my floor. I live on three. I can walk up and down the stairs, but for five years, it hasn't stopped on the third floor. My mother couldn't walk up and down the stairs often. We have two elevators, but to wait for one elevator to come, it was a headache. We have new building maintenance workers. Um, they come, they don't work the way the old workers did when I was young because our floors would get mopped every day. Now they don't do that. So I'm just, I'm for change, but change has to come, you know, with urgency.
Ms. Murray, can, if you don't mind putting your contact information and that of your cousins in the Q and A box? So we can follow up with you, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Young.
Hi, um, I've lived here in the Berry Houses in Staten Island for fifty-two years. Now, my daughter, who now lives with me, is going to speak. Her name is Donna.
Hi, my name is Donna Segrey. I live with my mother. She's been here fifty-two years. I moved here when I was ten days old. I am living back with her and, um, concerned that, um, which, that NYCHA or management is trying to get rid of the senior tenants, the people that have been here longest. We've watched in our building alone, two tenants, two families that have been here for quite a while have suddenly disappeared. Their apartments are vacant. Um, yeah, they tried to evict my mother and I after the death of my younger sister. They still won't answer as to why. They accused her of subletting. Nobody was here for eight months. Um, as far as maintenance, the staircase is never cleaned and it stinks like urine. People are dealing drugs in there. Building is filthy. Our floor is constantly dirty. Right now there's vomit all over the first floor. Um, there is no more painting of the hallways. That was a regular thing when I was younger. I don't understand why, um, the buildings have to look like this. Um, we have been living with drug fumes from the apartment underneath us. Management is aware of this over and over again, as well as the police, and it still continues with the drug activity. Marijuana is allowed to be smoked in this building. I don't understand why we had to get draft blockers and everything. Two people on this floor smoke. I smoke tobacco, but I have to go outside. I don't understand why the whole building has to stink like pot.
I get sick from it.
Um, we've asked management to remove the bars from the windows. These windows have not been cleaned in thirty-five years. You can't see out of them. They don't offer any, um, answer as to how to clean them. And we were told that maintenance does not have keys to unlock the bars. So here we are at our ages, living with bars on the windows with no way to clean them and can't see out of them.
They're disgusting.
And concern is that we have an electrical vibration in our apartment that has been going on and on. Management knows about it. I went and got the super, brought him up here after crying hysterically. And I just, and outside right now in the grass, there's yellow, um, tags from a, a bad electrical stuff outside.
That's what's causing our electrical.
Right now, the whole apartment is vibrating.
All right, can you please put your contact information in the Q and A so we can follow up with you?
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know where the Q and A is, though.
Uh, you're at Berry Houses, right?
Yeah.
We'll get in touch with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rose Collins. Rose Collins, you can unmute yourself.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, I just had a couple of things I want to touch on. As far as apartment violation and basic respect, monitoring the work orders. Um, there's notices left on my door that repairs are going to be done or, or an inspection. And I'll contact NYCHA and let them, make them aware that there's not going to be an adult in the home and we need to reschedule. And at the same time, a bunch of men will show up at my door and my young daughters here feel threatened. Um, I tried to address this issue and NYCHA claimed they didn't see a work order, but I have, I have it in writing here. It was posted on my door. Um, and it came several times today and they're going to come back tomorrow. How can we address that? Because it's not safe for young women to be surrounded by a group of men and there's no adult protection here or anything like that. Um, another issue, just trying to touch base, I get off work after hours. I need a contact information as far as an email or some way I can reach out to someone to address other things. Uh, I know a lot of people looking for growth. I heard a, a couple of people mention that. I'm one of them. I'm not sure if it was planned, but post pandemic, all of a sudden was an annual research. I know the government's trying to put the stimulus out just to take it back. A lot of us didn't even get a stimulus, including me, and I'm not sure what's going on. But now, after my research, again, my, I spoke about this in the first meeting, my rent has increased. I owe two thousand dollars just randomly. I need to speak to someone about this. I'm not sure where they want me to get this from. And here I was trying to move and now I feel stuck. I just need to know how could we address things like that? I, I see someone trying to monopolize it, taking over by storm, but they're gaining and us, the residents, we're, we're taking a loss here. So moving forward, I'm not going to take up a lot of time because I'm just getting off of work again. But I appreciate the meeting. I appreciate what everyone's trying to do, but we do have to have a say. We do need to, I have a lot of concerns about my family's safety as well. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. If you put your contact information in the, um, Q and A box, we will follow up with you. Are you able to do that?
Yes, I can. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, next we have, uh, Mariela Maxwell.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, my name is Mariela Maxwell and I'm from Bushwick Houses, um, in Brooklyn, New York. And I am just have a concern because the other day about, um, a week and a half, um, my apartment almost caught on fire because I had a gas leak. Um, and you know, and, uh, a gas leak and, uh, and, uh, and the sparks from the, from the back of the stove. And I put in, uh, the cane and it shut off the gas and everything. And I'm waiting for a new stove and for them to come to see how they can, um, how they can help me with this because, you know, I've got out the stove and, and I, I don't know how long it's going to take. You know, and another concern that I have is about the, um, the floor that I live on. You know, they keep the garbage in the, in the hallway, you know, and they don't clean, they don't mop. They use dirty mops to clean the place. And, you know, when you do the complaint, they don't, they don't, you know, acknowledge you, you know? And, um, the rats, you know, is like too much happening. So I'm just a little concerned about this, those little things. You know, I'm living here, um, close to twenty-eight years and I, I'm not a complainer. I don't, um, you know, annoy housing every minute, you know, to come and clean anything or fix anything. Whatever needs to be done, I try to do it myself because I don't have no major, you know, major things. But, you know, I'm not a complainer, number one, you know? So, but that's my only concern right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. And if you would like for us to follow up with you directly, you can put your information in the, uh, Q and A.
Yes, because I'm a sick person when I need, you know, the stove. I really do need the, the, need the gas up and running and I don't know.
We have you at Bushwick Houses, but just give us your contact information so we can call you directly.
Okay.
Okay, in the Q and A. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is, um, Naomi Col, Naomi Cologne.
Yes, hello.
Hi, Ms. Cologne.
How you doing, Ms. Hudson? Good evening.
Good evening.
Last but not least, um, my complaint is that in Marcy Houses, we are having problems here with vehicles coming in and out of Marcy Houses. They honk the horn on us as we walk by. Uh, 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 um, one of the resident's dog has, uh, got hit by a car and the car kept going. Uh, we called the PSA three. I complained plenty of times to PSA three about these cars coming in and out of Marcy. There are signs on the outside of each entrance of Marcy Houses that there, this is not a drive-through. They drive through here, also plaster, plaster, uh, the plaster guys, they park their cars, their vehicles all over the place here. And the residents are upset. They're saying if they can park their cars here, we can park our cars here. It's a mess. And also most of, some of, not on all the buildings, well, some of the buildings are not being cleaned and they're being left, uh, filthy dirty. And, um, if I don't call the Rams, um, they will not clean it. She comes here, she does her job. She tells them, listen, you've got to clean these buildings. And then they clean the building at the time that she's here. When she leaves, they stop. I don't know what's going on. They're getting paid to do a job and services is not being rendered to the residents. We have to suffer with filthy, um, buildings. This was happening before covert, so they cannot blame covert. This was happening before covert. And, um, I think that NYCHA should start hiring people that want to do the job and want to, uh, uh, work with the community and tenant association. And I feel, um, disrespected in this development with the new, uh, staff because if I say something, they go and they throw me under the bus and they tell them, oh, Ms. Cologne said it. And then I got all these young, new caretakers looking at me like they want to hurt me or something. I think that this kind of behavior should be changed. And, um, something has to give here because we cannot keep complaining about the same things and nothing is being done. I have homeless people living on roof landings, using the roof landings for their bedrooms and, and using it as toilets. And people have to smell all this stuff. And when we complain about the buildings not being cleaned, nobody's doing anything. The PSA three don't come over here. Cars are passing right in front of them and they don't do anything. I spoke to my NCOs. I told them this and still nothing is going on. I'm about to call the mayor's office and if they don't help me there, I'm going to call Governor Forman. I am tired of this. This is disgusting here and I don't think we should live this way. This is just because you live in public housing don't mean they have to treat people, uh, um, a, a type of way that they're doing. I don't understand this. And I lived here practically all my life since I was a child. I've never seen it so bad, you know? This is all. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Cologne.
You're welcome.
And we have your contact information, so we will absolutely be in touch and continue to work on these, um, issues that you raised that are very valid.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
Okay. Okay, so as we come to the conclusion of this evening's, um, public hearing, I just want to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you for taking the time to be here on, uh, in a different setting on Zoom, expressing yourself. Whether you spoke about your single apartment, your single building, or your entire housing development, or if you're a NYCHA resident, a board member, an employee, an advocate, or an elected official. We are here, all here for a common reason. On over one hundred and sixty thousand apartments, your homes, and that we collectively need to pay attention to. We value your homes. We need to continue to value them and we need to preserve them. I want to acknowledge you and validate you and let you know that your voice and presence resonate. Trust me, it resonates. I encourage you all to stay involved, um, get involved with your resident association, stay connected with us. And together, let's build a sense of community while we preserve public housing and your apartments. Thank you and stay safe.